Sure.
All right.
That is what we're gonna get.
At this time, I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting. We appreciate those of you that are in attendance. We have with us this evening Reverend Tim Gore from Liberty Hospice, who is the Liberty Hospice Chaplain, to lead us in our invocation and start, will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. All please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, as we come before you tonight under the leadership of our Honorable Mayor and these distinguished council members, we ask that you would grant them the wisdom that they need to make sound and wise judgments and decisions, and also grant to them the courage at times when they have to make difficult decisions that involves our community. But we know that you put these leaders in this time and for such a time as this, that we may live in peace and harmony and continue to grow in equality among all of our residents and our community members, and ask that you will continue to bless us and keep us in your grace and mercy. And we give you thanks and praise in all things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I would also like at this time just to let the community know that former Sheriff Moose Butler did pass away. He was not only a longtime friend of Hope Mills and Cumberland County, but he was a friend of most anybody that was raised in Massey Hill because that's where he was from. A lot of people know him as a legend because of his football ability and the things that he did for the community up there. But the main thing was that he was somebody that you could call. As a former high school principal, when I was the first female principal at a high school in Cumberland County, he called me and gave me his cellphone number because he said that he was concerned that if I needed help, that I had a direct line to him. And I'll always remember that because he has always been a family friend, but that's just the time he would take if he knew that someone needed something. So keep his family in your prayers and just know that Cumberland County has lost another great man. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Ma'am Mayor, can we move, excuse me, item? Item B from the consent agenda to new business?
Item D?
B, Bravo.
Item B. Okay, are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve our agenda with the change of moving item B to, it would be, it would fall under new business. It would become item C.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Yep, I got you. I saw you moving. At this time, we have official comments. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Marley. Do you have any comments for this evening?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Scarrola?
Remarks complete, Mayor.
All righty. Mayor Protea?
Not at this time.
All righty. I do have one, and that is to pass out this Greater Fayetteville Business Journal. I did receive a letter from Marty Kayton, the publisher of this, and this is, it's online, imprinted in person, but he wanted the town to have one of these. And it actually ranks the business list with information about leading companies in a range of local industries and the democratic, demographic and other statistical information in the Fayetteville region. And this is a very thorough book. I haven't had time to look at it. It just got here, but I do have a copy for each member of the board and our town manager and clerk. Also, at this time, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to take this time to say thanks to the town and town staff. I've heard some citizens say they have seen some improvements, and that's what we want to hear and see because if you're doing something bad, they don't, we don't mind telling you when you're doing something bad. So I want to take this time to say, hey, thanks, kudos to everyone that's putting effort and striving to make Hope Mills the great place that we know it is gonna be, and it is already.
Okay. Commissioner Weg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. I was awakened this morning by jack cameras going out in front of my house. But what I found out is our town staff enforcing some of the rules and regulations we have on our streets. So they were breaking out curbing and putting new curbing in. Good job, guys. I was awake anyway. I have asked Ms. Sterling to pass out some invitations for you guys for opening day on April 9th. The rest of the town staff, she'll get them to you in your mailboxes. Anybody else is welcome to come to Broward Park on April the 9th for opening day of baseball, softball. The last thing I have, Scott, have we done anything about that house on the back of Trade Street with the wreckers and the junk cars?
So staff has been working on that for, it's not really a COVID enforcement issue, it's a zoning issue, but we have been making progress on that.
Okay, thank you.
Takes 30 days notice, and it doesn't happen overnight, but we are working on it.
And a 30 days notice has to have a reply time. Okay, I told him I would ask about it, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much for your official comments. At this time, we have presentation. The first one is a presentation from Nori Brantley regarding internships in partnership with Cumberland County Schools, the Town of Hope Mills, and the ICON program through Cumberland County. I'd like to welcome you to the microphone, and we're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here to tell you more about our ICON internship program. If you'll look at my presentation here, I'm with Cumberland County Schools as a part of Career and Technical Education, or CTE, as we refer to it. It's the ICON internship program I'm gonna talk about. And ICON stands for Innovative Career Opportunities Now. So, as I was introduced, I'm Nori Brantley. Nori rhymes with story. When you look at that, most people want to say something different. I am the High School Career Development Coordinator for Cumberland County Schools, and that's my email address there. I'm happy to share this presentation when we're done. So just a little history of our ICON internship program. It started, branched off from when Cumberland County Schools had the contract for the Youth Services Program at the NC Works Career Center. And bless you. And at that point, the funding was 70% for in-school youth and 30% for out-of-school youth. But around 2014, that switched, and the focus became more about out-of-school youth. And so they didn't have the funds to run the big summer work program that they had done in the past. So we knew we wanted to do something, and so Kurt Deviere said, let me see if I can get you some money from the City of Fayetteville. And we got a grant from them and a partnership with PWC. Since then, we added Fayetteville Tech and a few other private companies. Of course, COVID shut us down for two years, but we're gonna have a program this year. We're just not sure how small it's gonna be. So what this entails are paid internships for Cumberland County School students who are 16 years or older. We begin with an employability soft skills training, which I'll tell you a little bit more about. It's a competitive interview process, and the students work for 32 hours a week for either four or six weeks, whatever you decide. So the process begins with an online application. It's gonna be a Google form that I will manage. We'll have it open for about a month, and the students apply. A part of that application are questions, in addition to demographics, who you are, how to get in contact with you, what school you go to. We also ask the students what your, what your interests are. What are your plans after high school? Are you involved in a career academy with Cumberland County Schools? Are you involved in sports? Why do you want to do this internship? What do you hope to gain? And then we share that information with our partners so that they can look and, oh, this student is really interested in IT. We've got an IT position. That's really the kind of student we're looking for. Helps to hone in on the right candidate. So then the next step is us providing online soft skills training. In the past, it was a workshop where I brought in 100 to 200 kids at E. Smith High School, and would do a presentation, but COVID restrictions, of course, have changed all that. But Cumberland County Schools works with this great company, this platform called Major Clarity, and it's a career planning platform that we use in the high schools and the middle schools. And so within that platform, they have micro credentials that students can earn. And so there's an employability soft skills micro credential that's three or four hours long that encompasses everything. It talks about growth mindset, workplace etiquette, what to wear, privacy issues, things like that. It's completely comprehensive. So once the students apply, they'll log on and complete this credential. All students with Cumberland County Schools have a Major Clarity account. They just log in with Google and complete the soft skills training. So even if they don't get selected for an internship, they've earned a micro credential. So it's a win-win from the beginning. Then we move on to a virtual interview process. Of course, that's gonna look a little different this year, but students will individually interview either probably Saturday, April 30th or May the 14th. We're throwing some different dates around for the interviews to take place. Partners interview who they want. They hire who they want. So if you wanted, if you wanted to give priority placement to students who lived in Hope Mills, then you could certainly do that. All right, so it also, we partner with a company called IDI Services, who was referred to us through PWC. They use them to pay all their interns as well. And they do a lot of the monitoring. They handle all the payroll. I'll talk about more of that in just a little bit, too. But then you onboard with IDI, and then you can begin working in June. We're looking at, and I know that might be a little different for you folks, but we're looking at starting like the third, second or third week of June after graduation and everything is over. Students work for 32 hours a week for either four or six weeks, whatever you decide. That way, 32 hours a week gives a full work week in four days. In the past, we were doing less than 32 hours, and we had a young man or two that were on road crews at PWC. And every day, early, they'd have to stop and bring them back home and bring them back to PWC for them to go home early. So doing 32 hours gives them four days full-time. Nobody has to stop, shut down business, and that worked out really good. Traditionally, it ends six weeks later, which is in July. So we always have a very diverse group of applicants to apply. This is a picture taken. This isn't all of the interns, even in one year. The City of Fayetteville historically has done a recognition ceremony for them, and it's the end of the summer. So this is all the ones we could round up after they've gone their separate way. They participate from all the different high schools, and like I mentioned earlier, a lot of them attend the career academies, whether that be the IT Academy or the Public Safety Academy at Southview. So you just have a lot of, just the cream of the crop of Cumberland County Schools. So this is just a breakdown of the different schools. Just about everybody participates at least somewhat. So what it breaks down to with 32 hours a week for six weeks, the students earn $8 an hour, okay? It costs us $11.95 an hour because that's the administrative cost that goes into the IDI services. And what that pays for are for drug screens for all of the applicants who are hired. We don't drug screen everyone, just the ones who were offered a position. That also is a background check. That's all the workman's comp insurance is included in that. That's monitoring and unprecedented access that I don't have. So Beth Howell is the person that I work with with IDI. So she can get into PWC, walk in with a badge because they work with her and know her, and she just comes in and greets, and then she goes and monitors the interns in their office. I can't get into those places to do that monitoring. So they do that monitoring, and they take care of all of payroll. So the interns are actually employees of IDI Services. So interns don't have to be put on anybody's payroll. They don't have to go through HR because they're not actually your employees. That's another added benefit of working with IDI Services. They handle all the payroll. They distribute paychecks every week and take care of all that, and then the weekly monitoring as well. So we really get our money's worth with that $11.95 an hour. So our interns, this isn't a babysitting service where you just put them in a corner in a desk for four, six weeks. They are problem solvers. So maybe your front desk is so busy that Jim and Brittany can't get their, what they need done because there's so much going on. The interns could be that front desk. They could run the desk or man the phone so that Jim and Brittany can do what they need to do, or vice versa. They could do the project. Jim and Brittany can do their reception-type work, and the intern can do the projects. They've done lots of different types of projects through the years. City of Fayetteville had them do a transportation project where they rode all the bus routes and did surveys and analyzed and did a whole bus project. At one point, PWC, they went through some sort of records, forgive me for not knowing the specifics of it, but there was a lot of copying involved in providing documentation, but they saved PWC a million dollars in taxes. So they're, they're problem solvers and they're assets to your company. So these are the types of positions or departments. I'm sorry that it's kind of small there. They've worked in human resource. They've been in public services. They've been in IT. They've been in transportation, like I was telling you about, in finance. They've also, one year, we had a HUD grant from the City of Fayetteville, but they worked for Cumberland County Schools in the operations department. So about midway, we've got painter intern and carpentry intern and positions like that where they actually worked for Cumberland County Schools in those type positions. At Fayetteville Tech, they work in the biology and chemistry lab and their library assistants, their social media assistants. We had one young man that designed an app for PWC while he worked there. They can, they've been rec assistants through summer programs. They've done utility field services, all kinds of positions. So this is just, just a list of some of the positions that they've had. Like I said, I'll share this so you can not have to use a magnifying glass to see it. So that's it, kind of an overview of the whole program. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Madam Mayor, thank you for coming, Nori. I asked Nori to come. I actually asked her to attend our budget retreat, but she didn't meet the cut, so she's here tonight. I am, well, I'll let the board ask questions, but I was going to request the town, if we could partner with ICON and possibly sponsor or pay into the program to have at least a few children here to intern in the summertime. I think it's an investment in the children. I think the children can come, and they can be an investment back into town hall. And if you look at the data and the support and statistics, a lot of the jobs that will need to be fulfilled in some upcoming years, we won't have a qualified workforce to do it. It is also a way to introduce children into jobs in municipal government, and that is an area a lot of times that people or children don't explore. So I'll leave it to the board's pleasure. I would like the six-week program. I think the kids in the town would get a lot more out of that. But I do know that there's a timeline that we need to approve it. And then, so again, I'll leave that. If the board has questions, I'll leave it to you all, how you plan to move forward, if you don't want to move forward.
And originally, just one more thing. She made me think of something. When we, when we started this, the whole point was to keep our kids in Cumberland County. What happens is they don't make the connections. They go off to college, and then they end up in RDU or Chapel Hill or Asheville. They don't come back. And so the original kind of goal was, all right, well, they'll make a connection, make this contact while they're in high school. They'll go get an education from wherever. Then they'll come back to Fayetteville, and they'll go in the surrounding areas, and they go, oh, you know what? Let me call PWC. I intern there. Let me call Fayetteville Tech. And then they go to work, and they stay here and pay taxes here, which is what we want them to do. And so, yes, that like-mindedness, for sure.
And with what we've been trying to do with Fayetteville Tech, and we've done a partnership with Southview High School, and they actually have a carpentry class that started two weeks ago there where, and that's that age group from 18 up that maybe are floundering and didn't have a career in mind. And then we've got the Summer Scape's program, which is starting at Southview Middle School, which is, they've got a terrific STEM program. They're in a lot of career tech kind of materials that came in that we were able to see. So what we're looking at is now the other age that we need to do something for is that teenage time when they're making those decisions. And I think what I can add to this is that with the kids I work with, with Mayor's Youth Leadership, many of them have plans to go all over to college. And many of them also have parents that have jobs right now that like, have one that's, family owns plumbing business. And so he's looking at that. Well, some of them want to be coaches. Well, they don't realize parks and rec here, and that that might be an opportunity. So I did speak to some of our departments here because I thought, would there be a willingness to accept some? So, and I just wanted to share that with the board, is that I did find that, you know, our town clerk had worked with an intern before, and I also found out that our stormwater director had been involved with a project like this. So my, my goal is, and I think Dr. McCray's goal is, to have more opportunities for our kids so that we've got three dominant high schools here in Hope Mills, and those three high schools do have a lot of leadership skills that we would like to hopefully have them stay here. So again, I'm all for this, and I don't have a vote in this, but I do have, I want you to know that this is something that I think is excellent for our, our students. And also would tie right into some of the positions they might not even know about. They're here in municipal government, so. Madam Mayor. Any questions? Yes, sir?
Don't necessarily have a question, may have a statement. The internship, the internship program I witnessed and actually was a mentor to some, when I was in the military. And we brought in a lot of our kids from overseas, of course, when I was at the training school, and they actually came back to be federal employees. And I think it's an excellent opportunity, and at the pleasure, if it's okay with the board, I would like to make, make a motion that we proceed with this project, providing that the town manager get with the finance director and see what would be feasible at positions we can afford to keep us in compliance with our budget. If that's okay.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I had questions, but unrelated to his.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a great idea. I totally love it. Now, besides just Cumberland County and stuff like that, are you partnering with other, like, business entities for a lot of these, like, trades and stuff like that?
Anyone that will work with us, absolutely.
Okay.
It's just been, you know, especially with the last two years with everything being shut down. Prior to COVID, we had a, we had a handful. And that's really the only way the program is gonna, is gonna grow is if we bring in private industry. You know, PWC, this year, their numbers are a little smaller because their workforce is smaller. They still have a lot of people working from home. In the past, they've done about 15, and they've committed to 10. I meet with Fayetteville Tech on Friday. I'm not sure how many, if they're gonna commit to 10 or 12 like they've done in the past. But, you know, most municipalities, when they get to their limit, that, you know, that's however many they do. So in order for it to grow, we do need, we do need private industry. And those trades, that, I mean, I just see that that really being, what I would love to see, it be a pipeline. You know, one particular industry that I'm familiar with because of my spouse is the glass industry. There's no training programs. There's no, there's no continuing ed class. There's no training to install auto glass or to, to install shower doors or glass or storefront. The only way to learn how to be a glazer or an installer is to work on the job. And that's one industry that our young people just don't know anything about. And that's what's so exciting is that we could be that pipeline.
Please make sure we, like, we get your information because I have some, some interested parties that would definitely, probably be interested in, because I do a lot of stuff with automotive and welding and car community and stuff like that. So when is your deadline for this kind of stuff to?
Well, we have, we're, with, with you folks, if it, if you couldn't do anything until your fiscal year, January, July 1st, then we could just start it sometime after that. Everything has to be paid for ahead of time. It's a one lump, some amount that pays for the entire internship, but that does have to be paid before they start to work. So, and, you know, we always take off inevitably days off for the Fourth of July. So, you know, if you think in terms of it starting that, that week after the Fourth, as long as the beginning, you know, as, you know, the beginning of July, payment could be made, and then they could start and either work the four, six weeks, whatever you decide.
Okay.
So we can be flexible with that. PWC, I imagine they're gonna start like the second week of June. But that's just, that's just when they like to start. And then, you know, they're wrapping up around the Fourth of July. But there's no reason why we can't stagger those times. I mean, we could still do the interviews and have all that process be at the same time. That would be very convenient, and then we wouldn't have to bring folks back for another Saturday. So if we could have a commitment and go ahead and do those interviews on that April or May date, the end of April, that would be great. And then the students that, that you folks or that Hope Mills hires, they would just know you wouldn't start to work until, say, the second week of July.
Gotcha.
Okay.
No further questions, ma'am?
Okay, anyone else? Okay.
What, what is the monetary amount of the commitment that we're talking about?
It would be per, if we did four weeks, the, the cost for each intern would be for six weeks, that amount, for four weeks, that amount. So it depends on how many you wanted to fund, and then.
And that's a one time. That covers the whole. And at one year, there was some confusion. People thought they had to pay $2,200 and then pay the interns. No, that, that $22 or that $1,500, that's the out-the-door cost. That pays for the drug screens and the background checks and the workman's comp. That pays the intern $8 an hour. That covers everything, and that has to be paid before they go to work.
And it may be more feasible, Madam Mayor. It may be more feasible for us to do four weeks if we can't start until July, just so the kids, you know, they start back to school the end of August, and we could leave that. If we can amend the motion, I guess we can have the town manager look and see, and the finance director to see how many positions we could pay for and what those positions are.
Yeah, okay. So we've got the motion. We had a second. Any other discussion, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, welcome to Hope Mills Partnership.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. And you have this, I sent this, I can't remember off the top of my head who, but you have this PowerPoint. And so my contact information's on that initial slide. So just reach out, and we'll get it, get it going. Thank you. Pleasure.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Okay, next, we have our Public Safety Building Project Update, and this will be presented by Scott Garner, our architect. And I'll let you come to the microphone at this time and tell us all about it.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm glad to be with you and to talk about the building next door. You can see it's up, and we're making progress. Actually, last month was a little bit slow, but we're picking up steam. We are getting the roof on, the panels. They were over there forming the panels today. There will be 200 roof panels, and they are forming those. Roof panels came in rolls. They're forming them, and next thing they'll do next week is they'll put them on radius, and then they'll put the roof on, and that will conclude that part of it. The building is dried in. It's basically enclosed. It's basically heated. And a lot of work is going on on the interior, but we're making good progress. The next thing will be to put the metal panels on the exterior of the building, but that will probably be next month. We have approved the site lighting arrangement with Duke Power, and they will be coming on board to put in the parking lot lighting. As previously, in previous reports, I told you, the structural steel is complete. The masonry is 99.5%. The metal studs on the inside of the building are 99.5%. The jip board is probably 80% finished. Glazing is 90%, 99%. Mechanical is about 40%. Electrical, about 65%. And site utilities, about 75%. Overall, we are approximately 2/3 through this building process, and we have been very fortunate. We have not had any major things that came up. I guess the, the library sewer line was the big item that was a surprise to everybody, but we have not had major problems with the building itself. At this time, we have no pending change orders. We are home. We are on time. We are in budget. And with that, I'll open it up to questions to see what you might want to know about it.
Does anyone have any questions for Scott? No questions? Any questions? Looks like there's no questions this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we will continue to push forward.
All righty. Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have public hearings and the first is annexation case A 2022-01 Camden Commons Plat Book 00147, page 0196, 82.503 contiguous acres. And need to turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
It's not a formal presentation I'm giving. I'm just here to answer any questions. But what we do customarily do at this stage of the annexation where it's a public hearing for official approval. You're noticing your package, we did put together a staff report with a memo from plan review that outlined the recommendations from all the departments. So I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Ma'am.
Yes, sir?
I talked with Chancellor and Don a little earlier day about how things are gonna go with this project up there as far as sidewalks and everything concerned. And I know that both of these areas on the night's agenda is gonna have the code and proper entrances into the city limit. And thank you guys for what you do.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
No, I'm done.
Also note, in the staff report, it's a request to ask for authorization to start the initial zoning for both of these annexations as well.
So do I have a motion to authorize the staff to initiate the initial zoning of Camden Commons? Yes, sir?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. I'm sorry. You're just jumping ahead of time. All righty, at this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the Camden Commons annexation and this project that's before us? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing.
Close public hearing. Now at this time, do we have action?
I'll make the motion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve annexation A 2022-01 and approve or to officially request the initial zoning of 82.503 plus a minor acres of land to the MXD CUD Mixed Use Conditional Use District.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, two seconds. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. The next thing on our agenda is also consideration of A 2022-02 Camden Preserve Plat 00146, page 1, page 0152, 52.94 contiguous acres. And this would be again to to start the process to authorize initiating the initial zoning of Camden Preserve. So any comments you have about that or you just want me to do a public hearing?
Public hearing, same deal you, you have the recommendations from.
All righty, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the annexation A 2022-02 of the Camden Preserve? Anyone like to speak in opposition to this? Hearing none and seeing none.
Motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing. And at this time, do we have action?
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion that annexation of A2022-02 and authorization for staff to begin initial zoning process to designate development under the R 7.5 single family district. Staffs also requesting zoning of C1P, Plan Local Business District for a small 0.725 acre portion of the northwest corner along Camden Road.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you very much. Next, we have public comments. And this again, remind people that each speaker is limited to a comments of three minutes and the total amount of comment period will be 30 minutes or less. And of course, we have a sign up sheet, which we have some that have signed up. When you come to the microphone, if you'll introduce yourself, give us your address. And then we do have a clock that you'll be timed with over there. The first person we have is Mr. Rod McLean.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff and fellow citizens. Rod McLean, 5435 Fanton Lane. I saw the agenda today. And hidden in the consent agenda was the approval of the sale of Trade Street. It makes me wonder and worry. Has anybody considered the wetland mitigation? Three of you who are sitting on the board now signed all the contracts for the wetland mitigation and the permits of the dam. You have destroyed the parish house. I say you, I'm talking about the BOC. You have destroyed the parish house, which was going to be the museum. You have now said, let's quickly sell this Trade Street and put it on the consent agenda and try to hide it so that the public doesn't see it. What are you going to do about the wetland mitigation? We've just paid a whole heck of a lot of money on interest for the building next door. And what you're looking at now is A, losing money on the sale of the Trade House and B, paying money for wetland mitigation. I have not heard a word about it from anywhere. And also, the original getting rid of the Trade House was done at the board retreat over in Rockfish, not in the public view. I'm beginning to wonder about transparency. But this worries me. I do not want to be paying taxes to pay for mitigation after we came to an agreement that we would provide a museum. And a lot of people worked on that. The Historic Commission, the Lake Advisory Board was worked on it. And a lot of other people worked on it. A lot of people have donated stuff for this museum. And now to say that it's going to go away? I think somebody needs to look at this very seriously. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification of a can, our budget retreat was subject to open meeting laws, which means anybody could have attended that wanted to attend. And it was also videoed, so it could be viewed on video. So our discussion on the parish house was subject to open meeting. Nobody chose to come. So we're not hiding anything. It was put on the consent agenda tonight to take action on it in open session. So just point of clarification.
Okay, thank you.
I'll add one other point of clarification, which is that in order to sell it, we'll have to do public notice in 30 days. Notice to any bidders and figure out how to sell it so that it will be a public process to sell it.
Thank you. Okay, the next for public comments, we have Mark Sternlich.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. My name is Mark Sternlich. My address is 2712 Bennington Road, Fayetteville. I'm a Superior Court Judge here in Fayetteville. I was appointed last May to fill a vacancy created when Mary Ann Tally retired as Superior Court Judge. And I've been serving as Superior Court Judge since May and am now running as required in order to keep the seat to be a judge who's appointed to the Superior Court bench has to run in the next general election to keep the seat. I'm fortunate not to have a primary, so I'll be on the ballot in the general election in November. I grew up here in Fayetteville. My mother was the first data processing manager. Tells you how far back that is. It was data processing, not IT. And I believe she was the first female department head for Cumberland County. My dad managed a factory out on 301 that made curtains and draperies and eventually went into the insurance business with Equitable. I graduated from Terry Sanford, went to Carolina undergrad, Carolina Law School. Was very pleased with the ballgame Saturday. And came back to Fayetteville in 1985, practiced for 36 years with a law firm that became Beaver Quarry, Sternlich, Tarp and Broadfoot. My practice experience was all on the civil litigation side. Had other folks in the firm who did criminal work. Of course, since going on the bench, I have held criminal court, I've held civil court. I spent six months in Wake County because Superior Court judges rotate. They're typically in their home district for six months and in another district for six months. I'm currently back in Cumberland County for the January through June term. My biggest concern as a judge is to see that everyone is treated fairly and has a level playing field. There is, as a judge, there is nothing more important to me than everybody gets treated the same and fairly and has the law applied to them equally. It doesn't matter what color they are, who their lawyer is, who they are, who their, what their party affiliation is. Everybody should come into court and be treated equally and have the law applied to them fairly and equally. I greatly appreciate the time this evening. I'm gonna leave some card with the clerk for y'all to pick up if you'd like later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rosalyn Hood.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, other board members. My name is Rosalyn Hood. I live at 3808 Chantel Drive, just down the street. I have been a citizen of Cumberland County for 20 years. Brought here by the military, just celebrated 20 years in the military. Deployed twice to both Iraq and Afghanistan. And I'm still currently serving in the military as the operations officer for a drill sergeant battalion. So now I'm responsible for training up soldiers that are being shipped out now. Also in my 20 years here, I have been a dedicated coach for the Hope Mills Recreation Department, Stony Point and on Fort Bragg. I'm often at the the baseball opening night with my little team. So I'm looking forward to being out there this year. I graduated from Western Carolina University. And just before I actually graduated, graduated, 9/11 occurred. I had hopes of going to law school. I put that on hold to serve our country. Once I completed that first deployment, I did go and attend and graduate from North Carolina Central University School of Law. And after graduating from there, served another deployment and then started my career in the district attorney's office. I've been there for 14 years. Consider myself a career prosecutor. In those 14 years, I've handled everything from a traffic ticket to a murder. I particularly specialize in the district, District Court Juvenile Courtrooms and Domestic Violence Courtrooms. I've worked in both district court and Superior Court and enjoyed it immensely and started under Mr. Grantis. And Mr. Butler was a dear friend of mine. We worked out together in his gym. He made sure I maintained my military fitness. Fitness. I'll I'll miss him. Just wanted to take an opportunity to honor him because he was a great person. But I am on the May 17th ballot, Democratic ballot. I do have opposition. And I would love the support of this town, my town, and the citizens of Hope Mills. I appreciate the time allotted to allow me to introduce myself. You guys have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, ma'am.
Okay, next we have our consent agenda. We do have item.
B.
D?
B.
B, I'm sorry. I don't know why I want B. Item B has been pulled for new business. Is there any other item that you'd like pulled to move to new business? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with one item, item B being moved to new business?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, we have old business. Consider consideration to authorize the town manager enter into an agreement with the John R. McAdams Company Incorporated for the provision of Heritage Park Phase One construction documents. And I'll turn it over to town manager. Carla Marco, our Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The construction document phase is a routine part of the design phase of the project, which is the last portion of the design phase. Pursuant to the Mini Brooks Act, we did do a RFQ process, which is required for design services or professional services. We did a 15-day RFQ process. And McAdams was the only firm that submitted a proposal, which works out for us because they have successfully completed both the master plan phase and the design development phase of the project. So it actually makes sense that they continue on with the construction documents phase of the project. They did submit a proposal for the design process in the amount of $79,910. If you recall back in February, I think it was February 15th, you all approved a, a, I'll take that back. It was October 4th, 2021, that the board approved the capital project fund for the entire project in the amount of 701, 701, 175, which included construction and the design phase. It also includes our commitment for the match of the Part Def grant. So the design phase of this project was budgeted for and planned for. So this is just in keeping with the design process. If approved, McAdams would continue on with construction documents and anticipated completion is May of this year. So we anticipate being able to bid the project out for construction in May. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, do I have any questions? Any questions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the John R. McAdams Company for professional services related to the Heritage Park Phase One construction documents.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have, under new business, we have consideration of nominations for town volunteers. This is behind Tab 14. And do we have a recommendation from, I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, the nomination committee would like to nominate the seven citizens listed in your packet for the Sunshine Committee and the two citizens listed for the Veterans Committee.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of the nominating committee.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you much. All right, discussion of five for Friday program. At your seats, you do have a pledge. And if you remember from previous years, really last year especially, this is through Sustainable Sand Hills and we did have a meeting with them as far as this proposal. And what it amounts to is we take the pledge as our, for our municipal government and we encourage anyone in our municipal government, as far as the employees and staff, to participate. And what this is, is that on Friday, it's called the Five for Friday campaign. And what you do is you pick up five items that would be otherwise discarded on the ground. And they want you to do it in your workplace, in your home place. And that, and what the reason for this is, is they figure if everybody picks up five things one day a week, that's gonna keep at least some areas clean. And they're suggesting, like up here, if you're walking the park or if you're in some of the intersections we have that you're, that are very safe, that you can get close to. But we've got to start setting a good example and who best to do that but your town. But we've got to start setting a good example and who best to do that but your town officials and your town staff. Because we do have a litter problem in Hope Mills. The youth, the prime movers, and our schools are tackling this as a project for them as far as trying to make Hope Mills beautiful. And that's why I think as leaders of Hope Mills, we need to take this pledge. So, I just encourage you to sign it. You're asking for your pledge, is all you have to do is put your email down and we will turn these in to Sustainable Sand Hills so that they can then mark us off as supporting this special program. And that's all I have for that. All right, the next item that was asked to be put on the agenda is consideration of approval of Self-Trade Street Museum Building as instructed by the Board of Commissioners. And I'll ask Commissioner Skarola, she asked for this to be moved, for her to comment as needed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I was contacted, I mean, hit the mic. I was contacted by citizens as they seemed to like me. I'm a likable person, I digress. Because they were concerned, the fact that, yes, it was brought up at the budget meeting. But I was, I was asked, I was asked about the, excuse me, the, from the permit, from the construction of the dam, it was written into the permit about the addition of the museum. And so, the question would be, in accordance with the dam permit dated August twenty-six, twenty sixteen, item seventeen. And I will read that item seventeen, so our citizens who may not be tracking can hear what it is. Item seventeen mitigation, in lieu of compensatory, compensatory mitigation in the form of payment to an established mitigation bank or in lieu fee program, the committee shall submit a formal report detailing improvements to the dam and lake area for recreational use. The plan should detail improvements to the public use swimming area, piers, docks, and fishing and boat ramp areas as well as plans for the museum project discussed in the permit application. The report shall be submitted to the Corps for review and comment within thirty days of completing dam construction. Was there any, any information on that? Any comment, review? I know it's before your time, Scott, but.
I guess the, I can speak to that. And that is Heritage Park is one phase of that. And Heritage Park is where we would have the site, onsite would be the foundation of the old mill and things pertaining to that. Also, the fact that we would have within the Episcopal Church documents also related to the history of Hope Mills. I do believe that, that we're within the rights with this because the main thing was that we were going to record our history. And I think Heritage Park is, and I guess Mr. Parks and Rec Director Lamarko Morrison can kind of expand on that as far as what that's gonna be. Because it does have historical documents and things that would be, or I wanna say signage and stuff, explaining what happened in Hope Mills, related to the mills. So, our history would actually be recorded at that spot, too.
Okay, if you all would recall, part of the ParteF grant, one of the, you know, attractive things about the grant that helped us get it was the fact that we would have the storyboards to talk about the history. The history of the mill, the history of Hope Mills, but also discuss the environmental, environmental benefits of the flume, et cetera. The flume is also a historic structure, so it would, you know, talk about the history of the flume and then how we've transformed into a water feature. But it would also talk about, not only would we have the artifacts of the old gate, but there'll also be comprehensive, you know, detail about the history of all the artifacts. And then even some history about the old mill itself, so.
And I get that, too. But that's kind of like an interpretation. When it asks for, you know, something, comment within thirty days of completing dam construction, and it says museum project, not, not Heritage Park, not park, not storyboards at a, you know, a sidewalk, but it says museum. Now, as Ron McLean had said, we got rid of the parish house. You know, with the Trade Street building, with it being, you know, put up for sale, what's our plan? If this calls for a museum, aren't we non-compliant in this?
Let us ask for a comment within thirty days. I would say, you know, at the council retreat, as you all know, staff was asked, do we have any purpose for this? Well, as a museum, the building has an occupancy of five point five people.
Yes.
If you have someone there presenting the museum, you're allowed at four people actually in the facility. Having a museum for a school group, but you can only take three or four people through at a time, doesn't really facilitate a museum. Staff was asked if we would want to utilize it for any other purpose. Anybody's gonna put my IT people in there or inspections? The cost to rehabilitate the facilities for IT, for heat, for all the things necessary to have office space is a quite large lift and just the amount of money and the portability of the building. It just isn't conducive to our location and our needs. So, you know, that was one of many projects we addressed that day. And as you heard, staff presented that, you know, I say this repeatedly, there's, there's nothing more expensive than a free building that someone gives you that was, you know, they wanna get out and tearing it down and demolishing it. So, the town gets it donated for a dollar or however that's worth here. And then it typically is not a structure that is conducive to just jumping in and utilizing for public space. So, staff's recommendation was to look at, you know, taking a motion. We did, we did have a discussion and it was referred to bring this back for public dissemination. So, it is noticed, it is properly, it has been publicized, and it's up to the council to take.
Madam.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That was, the decision to sell the building was not a decision we took lightly. We had a very in-depth discussion. I think we spent, what, fifteen, twenty minutes talking about it? And the bottom line, and I can't speak for nobody else, I'm speaking for me. When I'm at a crossroads in the past, I reach to what I consider experts. And I think when we asked the individuals that work for the town, that has the expertise to know whether or not that building was feasible for anything, they gave us the honest opinion, the honest answer. And they said that, number one, it would not be cost-effective. Number two, we said, well, can you find another use for the building? As Scott just said, when you are limited to just five individuals, care, what can you really do with the building that you are limited to a capacity of that number? And number three, we looked at, can funding be allocated elsewhere that the town would greater, or better benefit from? And we all agreed at the time, those of us that voted yes to support that decision because it was based on the recommendation, what we consider is the recommendation of our town experts.
And I totally get that part. However, to go back to this, to the actual permit, where can we find any kind of comment upon completion of the dam, saying that we were gonna do something for a museum? Because there's still, there's a paper, there's gotta be a paper trail. I mean.
Well, I would require some lengthy research. If we knew about this prior to tonight.
I got you.
Then we may have been able to respond appropriately.
Okay, because, I mean.
That language, I don't read that to require us to have.
Right.
Certainly it wants to.
Right.
But when you go back, okay, so.
We also, just comment, Commissioner Skarola also, is we also had Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three of the lake plan that was submitted. And that plan was directly changed so that it does not look entirely like it was supposed to look. So, you're also looking at Heritage Park, at the time was not designed as it is now. And the design we have now is an outdoor museum. And that's how I relate it. And I feel like that's, at the same token, a museum doesn't have to be within four walls or within a building.
Well, and I have no problem if that's what the plan was. Here's the part I'm concerned about, this was the part of it. Carefully read your permit. The general and special conditions are important. Your failure to comply with these conditions can result in a violation of federal law. So, can we make sure we're not in violation of a federal law? Because, I mean.
Yes, Commissioner Skarola. All right, let's say that, we all say that the church has historical significance, right? We agree? So, why not take and allocate and make the church part of a museum to meet that requirement?
I have no problem with that. I just wanna make, see, these are questions that are being brought up and thought of now, when obviously before we.
But would it work?
Let's, I wanna see what the paper, I wanna see what the paper trail has to say. So, I mean, I'm not asking for much. I wanna see what we had completed. If it, if it says, you know, this is what we planned, if we planned on the parish house that's now nonexistent or if we planned on another building, so be it. So, my, my follow-up question, if we have a paper trail or if we don't have a paper trail, I wanna see some kind of documentation. Now, with the sale of the Trade Street Museum Building, will the funding be placed in a separate capital fund to purchase an eventual museum or will that?
Staff would recommend to go to the general fund for other obligations.
All right, do we need to make a motion on?
You have, since it was on consent agenda, you'd have to make a motion to approve it now.
Mayor, our, our attorney said that he doesn't interpret that to mean that we have to have a museum at any one location. But I'm pretty, I'm pretty satisfied with it, the way, the way it is.
You'll make the motion.
What I can do as well, I mean, selling this building will be a process that we need to go through. We can't just vote to sell and have it sold tonight. So, while that process is going on, I'll be happy to take a deeper look at that and make sure that I feel like we're on solid ground.
My other, my other comment, Mayor, was that this building was an afterthought after the whole dam project. This was, the dam project was done, the lawsuit, everything was done. And this, this building was actually a afterthought after the whole dam process. So, I don't, I don't see where.
I mean, this was twenty sixteen, so it surely wasn't an afterthought.
At that point in time, the parish house was still being considered as the museum at that point in time. Okay, yes, sir.
Well, I got some phone calls this evening, actually sitting right here. That was concerned about stuff that's disappearing out of that building. I don't know what it is or who it is or, or nothing like that. But they just asked me to check in on it, that the stuff is being taken and disposed of or sold or taken home or, or given away or something. And I want us to watch that for sure, because we had some valuable stuff in there. Especially that was left to us from former Mayor Eddie Dees. He had a lot of books and, and albums and stuff like that in his collection.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I will point out, if you do go to sell the property, you need to decide whether you want to do it by auction or by sealed bid. It'll lead to a adopted resolution, either setting the date of the auction or.
Seal bid, actually, seal bid.
Or setting the time, it needs to be at least thirty days.
Seal bid, you wouldn't want an auction, would you?
Wouldn't you, would you not recommend a sealed bid?
I probably would. I mean, you have either option under statute, but sealed bids usually.
So, what the motion should be?
Motion be to approve.
Item C.
Item C. And add to that, to be sold by sealed, to recommend selling by sealed bid, is that how they would say it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the number one sixty-eight dash two sixty-eight.
There it is. That's the, that's what, that's what the item was.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that to sell the Trade Street Museum Building and, what else we gotta be adding to it? That's it, right? Yeah.
To sell by sealed bid, which is under North Carolina General Statute.
Okay, sell by concealed bill, by, what is it, North Carolina General Statute?
North Carolina General Statute, one sixty-eight, two sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight, two sixty-eight?
Sell by sealed bid.
Sell by sealed bid.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? So, be three, two.
Just to clarify for the board, you still have the option of rejecting all sealed bids, so this is not the end. You still have a lot of rediscussion as to what you'll.
Okay.
This is just opening up a bid, so the board can see that.
Okay.
And then, can I still, can that research still be done so I can track?
Yes, I will.
Okay, cool.
Okay, and at that time, at that point, do we have anything that you'd like to ask with the manager's report? Or do you have more to add to it or?
If you, the week of April fourth, Schnebel will be here to do an additional dam inspection. So, just wanted to make you aware that public works working dropping the lake, not, not logged out of foot. So, they are gonna be here to inspect the dam surface, the April fourth, sometime that week. And I did want you to be aware that they did remove the Fantasy Lake signs at one of the meetings you were at. A sentencing Saturday, we actually, a request that does follow up with that and that property owner.
Okay. Anything? Okay, any staff comments?
No, I have one comment, additional copy to put up on the table.
Okay, and if, if you do, can, can you be the point of contact to collect these and I can get you the address that they need to go to? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, any other staff comments? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to go to closed session?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call a closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three, three eighteen eleven, eight six, to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
I get second.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll go to the front conference room at this time. All right, you ready?
Yep.
At this time, I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to seal the minutes of the closed session until such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session and further no action was taken.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Do we have another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We'll see you all, the next meeting is April the fourth, April fourth, and then.
April fourth.
April fourth. All right, good night.
Good night, y'all.
Yes.
Good night, y'all.
Good night, y'all.
Do we need to do anything at all with that internship, other than just?
No, if they, I would probably prefer it that way, they just.
And I'm sure they.
I hate no one. Even my ex-husbands, I don't hate them either. I don't like them.
And we thought there was.
Trust me, I'm not deploying overseas, so nothing, this, this is not. I got you.